Scott.
Here.
Brittany.
Here.
We have John by phone.
Here.
And myself, Ben is absent tonight. Okay, next committee is the whole meetings on July 7th and regular board meetings on 21st. Is that coming up later or is that good?
This will be a part of the approval.
Okay. Alright, moving on. Can I get approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Approval of minutes.
Motion?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Treasurers report.
That's me. Beginning balance, five hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents. Deposits are three hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. Total expenses was eight hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents for an ending balance of sixty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Local government pool balance of two million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-two cents.
Yep. Can I get approval for the treasury report?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, expenditures. Can I get approval of the expenditures?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Alright, all in, any discussion? Any questions? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. No public comment?
We're in the student council and committee of the whole report.
You know, am I up? Oh, I wonder if I'm in the wrong meeting. That's why. Like, why is nothing coming up on my end? Alright. Yeah, student council, sorry. Nothing there, right? Committee of the whole. Anything you want to discuss carrying over there? Eagles Wings Charter School update, anything on that?
No. We will be having an executive meeting later this week to discuss some pertinent matters regarding the charter. This gets into some of the fundraising and allocation of responsibilities, so more to follow from that meeting.
Alright, Nathan, you're up.
Alright, so spring sports are now over, so we'll run through kind of the last playoff series here. So track and field, we did have five runners that competed at the state track meet that was held in La Crosse on June 6th and 7th. Alyssa Fossum competed in two events, the 100 and the 200 meter, Kayd Lissin in the 400 meter, Penelope Burfield in the 800 meter, Jacob Taggart in the 800 meter, and Isaac Dickinson in the 1600 meter and the 3200 meter. Isaac finished fourth and fifth, and so he placed on the podium for the two events that that he was in. Jacob and Isaac, they were also the sectional champions in their events, so congratulations to those track kids. It was the most kids we've ever had, represent our school at the state track meet. Great accomplishment for them, and-
How many divisions are there in the, is that like cross-country?
There's three divisions, yep. And Kayden and Isaac are the two seniors out of that group, so it's nice.
Now, does that affect us like it would, like it did with cross-country, didn't?
No, because there is a team component to track, but you can't make it, your whole team doesn't advance in track. It's only individuals, so there will be a state champion for track, but it's really which kids that have qualified for state track accumulate the most number of points. Couple of years ago, a girl from Webster won the straight, the state track in girls for Webster by herself. She won, I think she won two events and placed in another one, and that was more points than any of the other teams had, so she walked home with a trophy for Webster as division three state champs when it was just her that was participating. So there is no, that performance factor that is, is in other sports does not apply to track and field.
Okay.
Softball, they finished with a 16 and 6 record and an 11 and 1 record in the conference. They won their fifth straight conference title and fifth straight regional title as well. They won their sectional semifinal game against Mellon, a team that they had lost to last year in the sectional semifinal and who had beat them earlier on in the season, so they avenged both of those losses, and they went on to face Thorpe in the sectional final, and they were defeated by Thorpe, and Thorpe went on to the state tournament. We did have several girls that made their all-conference team. First team was Peyton Simonson, Emily Adrian and Audrey Swanson. Second team was Kendall Nelson, Chloe Denninger and Savannah Budislawich. So congratulations to the softball team on a great season. And baseball, we finished with a 12 and 4 record, 9 and 1 in the conference. We won our fifth straight conference and regional title, same as the girls in softball. We all, we had our sectionals last week on Tuesday. Both of those games were on the same day, so we defeated Washburn 8-6 and then fell to Edgar in the sectional finals, so Edgar will be representing our sectional at the state tournament starting tomorrow for them. We had five players that made the all-conference team. Jared Schultz, Isaiah Alberg and Ezra Alberg were first teamers. Jared was the player of the year in the conference, and second teamers were Gunnar Gombiasky and Blaise Kidder. So a very successful spring sports season for all three of our teams that were representing our school. As far as coaching positions, I posted them last month. We have had some candidates for the middle school girls and the high school assistant position. I'm hoping to have those to you in the July meeting for approval. Because baseball ran late, I was not able to do any interviews and we will get those, those people interviewed and-
Hey, John?
Yep.
Can you mute until you want to talk, please?
Yeah, it does temporary noise. We can be quiet here.
So hopefully for the July meeting, we will have some approvals for the board on those positions. As of right now, we don't have any candidates for the football assistant position for middle school boys, basketball head coach or middle school boys basketball assistant coach, so we're hoping that we have some candidates moving forward, so. We did have a coaching resignation last week. Shannon Dickinson did resign from her position as assistant and middle school cross-country coach. She did that position for 12 years, so we thank her for the time and dedication for our cross-country team, and we're certainly, our cross-country team's in a great spot because of the time that she put into that. So I will add that position to our posting availability for, for that cross-country position for the fall. One thing that is new this year, and that's the next piece, is that WIA Give Back program. WIA started this, this year, and they gave funds to schools for very specific uses. The one that I applied for and we received is a $600 grant from Stratford Sign Company. The link that is there is the products that they, that we could use to spend our $600 on. One of the things that we have talked about when it comes to signage is new signs, new banners for the conference schools in the gym. I think on that link they wanted, I think it was $75 for like a three-by-five banner. We would need 10 of them, so if we have $600, you know, we'd have to come up with 150 plus some design fees and plus some shipping fees, and we could get those banners almost, almost paid for through this Give Back plan. So that was kind of my thought on, on that front was to use those, those funds for that, for that purpose. One of the other things that we did talk about, and I'm just bringing it up at this time because, you know, we're talking about signage for the gym, is that when we, when we were talking about the championship banners that we got put up this winter was some way to recognize our teams that have advanced to either a state tournament or won at the state tournament, or in one case, an individual who won at the state tournament. So I have a list there of all of our teams that have qualified for a state tournament. So one of the routes that we could possibly take is a banner for each one of those nine teams or individuals that have represented our school at a state tournament. Or we could go the route of the individuals or teams that came back with some sort of hardware from the state tournament. Each school does it a little bit differently as to how they want to recognize those teams, so it's, I'm just throwing this out here for a discussion as to, you know, is there a direction that we want to go, and it doesn't need to be tonight by any means, but you know, it's something that we've got some time right now if we're going to do something like this to kick the tires on it, so.
I guess some examples that you see other schools doing, just so we could see what they're doing.
Yeah, I, I didn't take any pictures, but I was at Superior High School a couple of weeks ago, and they recognized all of their teams that had made a state tournament, you know, and the, they were very consistent, so they, you know, they had their Spartan logo on it. They said, this was the team, this was the year, this was the division. Were they just a state qualifier? Were they a state runner-up? Were they a state champion, you know? And so I, I think we could create something like that that has some consistency to it where we're listing all of the important information. Obviously, the state champion individual, Callan Lissin, that's a little bit different because it's not a team, it's an individual, but we could probably, whatever format we want to do it, we could probably craft something to include him for that as well. I know another school, Mellon, I don't think they've ever won anything at state, but they just have big banners that just say, you know, the teams that have made it to state, and I think South Shore is on that same line, that any of the teams that made it to state. They're, they have a lot of space, so they have giant banners with every person that was on the team and the managers, and I'm like, I don't, I don't think we need to go to those, to those extents, but I think we can acknowledge those teams that have made it. So it's either right now three or nine, depending on which, which direction we, we would want to go for that.
Yeah, if you want to bring it, have something, maybe some pictures or something if you can give to other schools.
Okay.
For a meeting in July on the 7th.
Okay.
We could do it at the, the committee as a whole.
Yeah.
I'll take a look at them, then we can make a decision.
I know, I will not be here on the 7th, but I can, I can get the photos and you can kind of see what we're dealing with and kind of go from, from there if that's something that we want to, want to be able to do.
Sounds good.
And whether we use Stratford Sign for that as well, because we'll have a contact there or somebody else to do those pieces, I mean, that's a different, you know, doesn't, doesn't really matter which direction we go, but I think it's a, something that we could add to our gym.
Okay.
The last thing is, we're already looking to fall, so we set the fall sports meeting date for all of our fall athletes, Monday, August 4th at 7 o'clock at night. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Principals report, Ian.
Yeah. So, updates and some recognition, so, you know, just congratulating our senior class. The ceremony went well, I mean, I thought everything was smooth, had a lot of great collaboration and help from our staff, so that was huge. And again, our spring athletes and coaches, as you know Nathan just kind of talked about, so it was really fun watching the kids play and do things that they love. Was able to make it down to the sectional baseball game, so that was a lot of fun to watch. At the end of the school year, we completed a data day with our CSU 12 team. We identified areas of growth and student needs, and we're going to further analyze this a little bit more and hopefully disseminate some of that information to our staff in the fall. So that's going to kind of guide our PLC process, where we need to go instructionally and just how we can reach all of our students. Upcoming events, so we have our summer school session that started today. We have our Eagle Wings Governance Board Retreat on June 30th, and then our second summer school session on July 7th. And then just some upcoming work that we are looking at, like I said, analyzing our academic data dig information, submitting our AGR reporting, and finalizing some of our current open positions that we have. And then this week, we're meeting with our face teacher to go over some curriculum and what that will look like for the fall, and then looking at student and staff handbooks with our leadership team as well, and just kind of fine tuning some of that information. And then right now, finalize, finalizing our, our staff evaluations for the school year.
Okay.
I want to just make one comment on the graduation. I was in the sort of the general audience, and I know our, our sound system isn't the best, but we've got to emphasize, anybody speaking, how do you, you know, get up to that microphone? When you're, the people that did, you could hear them just fine. But there's others, I mean, you literally couldn't hear a word. So maybe just as a pre-graduation, you know, preparation, we just got to make sure that-
I think we definitely need a different kind of microphone.
Yeah, and that's-
I was talking various heights because-
Well, no, what you need is one of those, you need one of those mics that picks up at a distance.
Okay.
And you can get them, it, it's specifically for like a podium like that. And it, it's not very big, but it can pick up a lot better. You could be away from it from, you know, three feet away, and it still picks you up pretty good.
It's more like a directional, like, like this microphone here.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that was one thing we did know about the, the microphone use, for sure.
Yeah, because like you said, a couple of speakers did speak in it, you could hear them just fine. Others, nothing, just zero.
Yeah.
It's, you know, just a matter of-
Even on, it was hard even on stage, honestly, to hear a couple of them.
Well, on your, yeah, when you're behind, it is a little more difficult because our sound's going out, but yeah. Anyway, that was it.
Cool. Alright, Pete, you're up.
Alright, so just a couple of things that we have. One thing that's been kind of circulating with superintendents and some of the discussion at the state level is this Act 12 reporting requirement. It was due to legislation that was passed in 2023, and it puts requirements on the school districts to report certain criminal activity that occurs on school grounds during events or not during events. And part of it is, is listed below. I think there's just a lot of concern, especially if you're getting news out of Minnesota, there's more and more violent acts that are occurring on, on school grounds, and I'm not exactly sure how they're going to use this data, but I know they're collecting this data and it's a requirement for us, but so we'll, we'll see where this goes, but just want to make sure that, that the board is aware of this requirement, and there's lots of discussion going on about what, what's, what are we supposed to do? And what are the, what's the guidance for it?
How in-depth are they asking about that? I mean, some of the stuff you can't really even give out.
Right, so I, I will say the first round of reporting, it, it doesn't get into specific names, but it gets into, you know, what, what was the, what was the, the criminal activity? What time of day, etcetera? So it, it didn't get into like who did what and who responded, but it was more just trying to collect demographic data and information, so, alright. Next one is the state legislation. Well, things have been moving at a quick pace. When I put this together, it was still sitting okay, but the joint finance committee, what they ended up doing with the special education funding is their agreement was to boost next year to 35% reimbursement for special education, and then the following year, the 26, 27, going to 37.5% reimbursement rate, so still nowhere close to that 60% that, that we've been pushing. And I know that some of the statistics were saying that with surveys that it was over 75% of people were thinking that the 60% was, was fair, and we should be getting that. But anyway, it's, it's going up, but just not where we were thinking. And then when it comes to per pupil aid, the, the joint finance committee did not approve any increases whatsoever, so it stays where it is. So so yes, so our state aid and state categorically aid is not seeing much of anything, so. Anywho. More to follow, I guess. With the Mertz Rookie Golf Scramble, just a couple of things of note. First, the date is set for September 20th, which is that third Saturday of the month. And then just also, as things have been transpiring with, with new leadership and new administration, met with Nathan and, and I, met with Aaron Swanson just to, to go over what, what are the expectations with, with that fundraiser? And how are we utilizing funds and, and trying to establish better guidelines and objectives with, with this utilization? And, and just also getting a lot more transparent to, to coaches as well as the community, so. More information to follow on that, so. And then last one is that request for proposals. I had three, three businesses come in and take a tour and meet with me and really get a good idea of what we're looking for, and I anticipate that we're going to get those proposals back. I did have it tentatively slated for July 7th for interviews, but we can certainly look at a different date if that's the case, but I know this is going to come up very quickly. And our, also our timeline with this, we don't have a whole lot of wiggle room if our objective is April, so I guess that would be something that we should take a look at too if we want to conduct those on the 7th.
So who is interviewing who?
So I, I, my recommendation would have the board interviewing these three companies.
Okay.
It just, it, it works out better for, for the district and the board when, when the board is involved with that, so they get a good feel of who we're going to move forward with and, and get a better idea of how, how those businesses operate. We want to make sure that we have, have a good fit with, with whoever's doing this, so.
Yeah, I would say we could keep it for the 7th. Alright, well, I mean, that's the committee of the whole, right?
It, it is, the committee of the whole. The other thing is, that is when the governance board has their meeting as well, but I can chat with them as well. Trying to condense stuff as much as we can, and we can certainly set a time for whatever works for everyone, so.
Alright. Alright, no public comment? Personal recommendations, we have one, two, three, four, five, six resignations, and one hiring recommendation. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Alright, any discussion on any of these? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
There were no donations received at this point.
We need approval for WIA High School membership renewal.
So, we, yearly, we need to renew our membership with WIA, and it's just that time. Just want to make sure that we are continuing on that course.
Alright, can I get a-
Make a motion.
Alright, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nope.
Alright. Alright. Approval of personal sick and time allocations after break-in service recommendations.
So ba, based on our discussion at the committee of the whole, this is the verbiage that was drafted as a recommendation and can be altered.
I want to make a proposal, we go three years instead of five though. I don't want to go back that far. Three years or five years is a long time, in my opinion, once I be able to think. John, what do you think?
Eh, three probably is a little bit more reasonable. I mean, you're going five years, that's, that's a stretch, and, and I think that's what, I think Mr. Ryder came up with that number, but five seems like a long time.
Reasonable time if a mother takes time off to be with her. There's maternity leave.
That would be a family leave that-
And that's 12 weeks.
Okay.
So if, if we're good with changing the verbiage to three years, we can make that recommendation, that approval upon changes five years to three years.
I just need somebody to make the motion.
I'll make a motion, change it to three years.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Board retreat planning.
So I didn't put anything in here, I know we had talked about it, it's a matter of develop, developing that board retreat date.
Are we going to end to July? Right now, we have a meeting on the 7th and the 21st of July. We could do another Monday, the 28th, or is there a different work night that would maybe work for everybody else?
28th doesn't work for me.
Okay.
Any other night does.
And that last week?
Yeah.
John, what does your last week look like in July?
Yeah, it's open, so I'd be good.
What, Brittany, how are you looking?
Tuesday would be-
Tuesday?
Good then.
Let's do Tuesday then, if that work for you. Okay.
The 29th?
Yep.
Okay.
Is there a specific time?
Anytime after 5:00.
Yeah, let's do the 6 o'clock.
6:00?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
What is that date?
It is the 29th.
Somebody from Texas. Yes.
Okay. Sounds good. So I will send out an invite and we'll make arrangements for the location as well.
Okay. Alright, Board of Education calendar, meeting calendar. I won't be here on the 27th for sure. Of October.
I'll be here the 8th of September, but everything else looks good.
The, the one caveat to this is October 27th. We talked about this before, I would recommend that we push, put this on here as well, that, that is our annual meeting, so we set that date.
Yeah. Anyway, I won't be out of the country.
October 27th.
I'm hoping not to hit her again.
Check.
Other than that, I don't see any latent issues for me.
Check. Once again, as we talked about it with April, that April to May turnaround is pretty quick, and that all hinges around Easter, which is that first weekend of the month in April, so.
It's a shorter meeting, right?
Something.
Alright. Keep it as it stands. Can I get approval of the calendar?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright. Policy updates, Group One first reading, can approve or table it? Just need a motion. Either way.
I'll make the motion to approve, but I do want to reserve discussing one of them.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay. And then for discussion, what do you wanna discuss?
Curriculum development, we talked a little bit about this one before. And I don't know if you got any infor- more information, Pete, as to why Neola's, um, suggesting we delete paragraph Q.
Um, I didn't get any additional information, John. Yeah, it, it was, the, the initial piece was just taking out where it's delineating the specific, uh, cultural backgrounds and it's just making it straight up that, um, it, it is recognizing all, so.
Okay, because P has a specific.
It, right. P, P is very specific because that, that is, uh, due to Act thirty-one within Wisconsin, um, so that, that has to stay, but the, the rest, there's nothing specific to that. The, there is some question a- as far as Asian-American, uh, but nothing law-wise at this point in time.
Well, I, uh, since we're not bottomed by Neola's edits, I would, uh, my preference would be we restore that. I mean, the teachers can still have the flexibility to, uh, address, you know, that subject matters they see fit, but I just, to, to eliminate it, I, they don't have a good reason to eliminate it, then I don't, I don't agree with that.
I don't know if it's feasible to do some of that, honestly, cause it's saying to do it at each level. So you're talking at every single level.
Well, does that mean elementary, middle school, high school, or I don't think it needs each grade, I don't know.
It, it does.
It needs grade?
It does mean every level it says.
Well, it doesn't say grade level, I, I don't know if what they're referring to when they say each level.
Right, it's, when, when it's referring to level, it's referring to your elementary, your middle and your high school.
Right, so three times it would be addressed at some point in a, in a school career, I, so, I don't know. I, I just don't see the purpose of eliminating it, there's no, I, I, there's no justification, there's no law we that were, has changed. Um, I think it's important to recognize contributions other than white Europeans, but others may feel different.
Well, do you wanna approve of all except for that one and bring that one back when if you feel it's something different, or?
Well, either that or, or approve them all and just alter the curriculum one to not include the edits, editing out of paragraph Q. I mean, we, I, we could table it and talk about it more for next month or however anybody wants to proceed, but.
I, I agree, so.
I, he, he, if he wants to modify, he has to modify the motion and then we need another second. You're gonna modify it then?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to modify the curriculum, uh, policy.
So.
As discussed.
Remove strikeout.
Yep. And then you're gonna second again?
I'll second, yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right.
What about the, um, the start college now? It doesn't say in there the, um, the maximum credits that we will cover.
I thought that, was that in the handbook then? That says that? So I thought it was eighteen, where did we get the eighteen drill? Cause I was told eighteen, I don't know.
Eighteen is the, the minimum that the state says we have to cover.
Well, then I would just go maybe by the minimum.
But I think we, we had, I remember previously we had set that as our maximum that we would cover, so then it wasn't. Question.
Did you have a spot there? You'd have to add it.
Wait, what does this say in B?
So this.
There it says right there, this student has already completed eighteen.
Yeah. And, and that's what it's saying is, you're, you're right, except as follows. So if they've completed eighteen post-secondary credits, they have to pay for it.
Yeah.
Gotcha. As many times as I looked at it before, it wasn't said.
All right, moving on, uh, H, sports pres- participative participation in lieu of P E credit.
So, um, right now, uh, the only thing that was talking about in lieu of is our, uh, student handbook, there's nothing yet, or not student handbook, but the.
Course catalog.
Course catalog, thank you very much. Nothing in our handbook and nothing in policy. Uh, what I have here is a draft, um, from Neola talking about, uh, this piece, we do not currently have it, so it's something that, uh, we can say, certainly take a look at and, and get some input if we wanna push this to, uh, July, but I want to at least continue our discussion here.
Okay.
Cause there, there was varying thoughts on this that, uh, the in lieu of could only be used by juniors and seniors, there's nothing saying that. Saying that, well, if it's, um, half credit for a sport or if it's half cr- credit for, anyway, so it's just trying to get some, uh, clarity on it and have a policy that backs up this and goes into our handbook as well.
And then who would be technically saying they get the credit, like who's following up that they actually followed through with?
Right.
You know?
And, and that, that's all part of it, that, that there would have to be a requirement for, um, the coaches to sign off that they indeed com- they did int- they did complete, uh, participation, uh, and we can determine if it was just participation in the sport period, if it was a, uh, varsity for that time. Um, so there's many different options that we can take a look at, so athletic, or the coach, athletic director and, uh, scheduling, so. And has, has an example from, from a previous district that, that could be utilized as form attracted, but it needs to come back to.
Did they say like you had to complete the season too?
Correct, yes, and then there's a portion on there like a question if you were injured. There was just more questions.
Okay.
Um, that followed, so, um, yeah, that process, the coach had to sign off on it, athletic director had to sign off it, off on it, and then the principal had to sign off on it as well.
Okay. Yeah, throw it into July.
Okay.
Bring it back to July.
Yep. All right, I'm gonna convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight-five-one C to consider the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employer over which this governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility at six-four D. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Brittany, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we are in closed session.